All right, I'm going to call us to order for the public information session on the budget on Monday, December 19th at 6:09 PM. And we'll just do, there's no public here, but we'll do it for the folks at home on BCTV to hear about our budget and our budget process. So I'm going to turn it over to Woody and he can kind of go walk us through some stuff and him and Frank can help us, hopefully all of us, to understand it and for the folks at home as well. And then we'll go into our regular meeting after. So go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And there have been some changes since our last meeting where we did the preliminary review with the board that we'll try to pick up on. Most of them have been what I would call changes for the good. But for the benefit of those watching, I would like to just basically go through the process quickly and our philosophy, I guess if you will, as we did our budget this year. And the philosophy is pretty similar to what it has been. And that is that we wanted and we directed administration to develop a budget that was level service and as close as possible to level funding. And that's something we've asked for in probably the last six or seven years. And we've always been presented with a budget that's basically level service. Reflecting over the years, a decrease in the student census a little bit. And I think that the administration, I know they have been very conscientious about controlling the expenses that they can control. Discretionary expenses have been leveled for quite some time. So we present them with that challenge in late October and they work with their department heads, developing a line-by-line budget. It's reviewed with the administration, with the central office and tweaked here and there and comes to us for our first look in early December. And then in the second meeting in December, we normally review it again, make sure everybody's up to speed and get the board's approval of the budget. And in which point it will be stamped and stamped on paper, I guess you'd say, and in time to warrant for the annual meeting, which will be February 14th this year, Valentine Day. So once again, a really thorough job by the administration. The finance committee of the board has met probably five or six different times on this. There's been some other meetings Frank and myself have met a couple of times. And this budget has been thoroughly developed on a line-by-line basis, looking at each department and saying, what do we need to operate it? What resources can we move around from department to department and accomplish what we need to do without spending more of the taxpayers' money? And I think this has been a great job. So just to give you the background for what we're, what we have, I guess what I always call your customer base is the projected number of students. That's obvious in the state of Vermont in general. Student census has been dropping over the years. We have experienced some of that. However, we seem to have leveled out and for next year, we are basically projecting a level number of students. And I start off with just saying students, that's number of kids. We're talking a minute about equalized students, which not all, that's not a bad way to say it, not all students are equal. But high school students under the state formula count for a little more than elementary school kids. And there's all kinds of pieces that go into that formula. But our, just our pure census count, we expect the high school to be up. We expect the middle school to be down slightly, but the middle school is up significantly from what we had projected for this year. There's a pretty good-sized group that's going to move from eighth grade to ninth grade, I believe. So that's going to give the high school a little bump. The career center is expected to be level in terms of the number of students that it's serving. So basically, our customer base is the same or higher. Now, on an equalized student basis, and these are the numbers that Frank talked about at the last meeting that we were waiting on and they came through just within the last couple of days. And the equalized student numbers are up by about 44. And that's the good news because that affects what our cost per student comes out to and then dropping down affects the tax rate. So that's good news. So I'd like to just go through the major categories in the budget and I believe you all have the, probably the summary sheet on the, on top. And I'll go talk a little bit about district-wide and then senior high, the career center, and BAMS and add it all up. One of the challenges this year of reading a budget versus last year is the fact that we now have all the special ed costs out of our side of the budget and into the supervisory union. So what that means is that it looks at face value like we're way down in the budget, but that's not exactly the case. So we'll review that too and Frank will help me with that one, I'm sure, to fill in some numbers. Starting out, looking at what we call the district-wide budget. And that is expenses that go across the three units or two or three of the units, whatever. Nursing, library, and one of the big ones there is our plant operation. This is a huge facility and the operating costs are significant. So those are in the district-wide budget. And we have asked that the discretionary part of that be held in line, which it has been. I would point out a couple of areas in that budget that are, make an increase. And one is contract services and maintenance. This is the big number to operate this facility. And that is up because we have, we are putting, doing some work in there that could conceivably have been bonded, probably better to do it, try to do it out of our operations, which we plan to do. And there's 225,000 or so from the capital, if you refer to the capital plan, which I, is that in the package again?
Yeah, it's in the handout.
In the handout, okay. You refer to the capital plan, there were, there's quite a bit coming up for FY '18. So we are taking a good share of that under general operations. And those are such things as, you know, safety improvements, some flooring work, windows, and some parking lot work that needs to be done. So we're putting that in the general operating budget and that does make the district-wide budget go up a little bit. Also, in the district-wide is the special education number. And that comes, drops about $3 million. Well, it's not that our cost dropped $3 million, but that's from moving it over into the supervisory union budget and it's offset. So if you look at the district total, which is on the front of the summary page for the district-wide, you can see regular education, which is the first line, which doesn't include special ed, of course, that's up a little bit. And a good share of that is from the additional money we put in for maintenance of the building. This facility is now 12 years old, pretty much. 2004 was really, if you want to consider it that way. So as we expect, there's things that need to be done and it will be a little bit more as time goes on. If you want to keep ahead of it, I have the deferred maintenance situation that got us into the mess we were in with the old facility. So the district-wide budget is up primarily for that reason. And once we factor out the special ed, then you see how it changes the bottom line. At the high school, we have also basically level funded things up. The only staff change at the high school was that we reinstated an administrative assistant position. As you recall, a year ago, we decided to eliminate the second assistant principal and we reduced administrators by one. At that time, the administrative assistants also went with that and we realized soon that we did need to have the administrative part of that. So this budget reflects an administrative addition, assistant addition. However, regular staff, I believe, is pretty much the same as it is, as it is this year. And with this, the average class size will actually increase, I believe, next year. So that's a good job there. The, so the senior high budget is, shows that we are going to be up 2.7%. We do have to realize that there are negotiated contract increases for staff that's included in this. And that human resource part of our budget is a huge percentage of it. So when there's step, negotiated step increases and longevity increases, there's a certain percentage of any increase is related to that. Nothing else particularly unusual in the high school budget. I would call your attention to the vocational ed total. The career center, we are by far the biggest customer of the career center, the high school is. And so we have our assessment there. So the senior high total, basically up $41,000, which on an $8 million budget is pretty, pretty tight, 0.5%.
Where are you looking?
Oh, it's adjusted, why is that, why do I have? Help me with that one.
Yeah, you're probably looking at the draft before we had the data that adjusted the career center tuition.
Oh, the career, career center tuition adjust, right, I'm sorry. So that shows then 2.7%, right?
Right, and in total, the four tenths, it's very similar to what you were saying, the over four tenths of 1%.
Four tenths, right.
Between, you know, between the two categories.
Oh, yeah, okay, the tuition, I see that. I was reading off, you're right, I was reading off my notes from the last go-around. Okay, looking at BAMS, up 3.7%. Staffing is held pretty steady there. There were, there are some increases in salaries and no changes in programs. I believe pretty much everything running the same as it was. So that one's, that one's pretty straightforward. The student census will be down a little bit, but it has been running consistently higher than we predict every year, so maybe it won't be down too much. So middle school, 3.7%, up $124,000 on a 3.45 million budget. Career center, basically no programs added or dropped there. We have, we are realigning the administrative duties there a little bit to reflect the current needs and keep administrative costs under control. But all the programs that we have now will be, will be continued, some modifications. But again, these programs are reviewed every year as to, are they, are they still viable in terms of what we have for teaching resources assigned to them? And are they meeting the needs and the requirements of a technical education? And we have pretty good subscription to most of the programs over there now. And as I mentioned before, we're projecting, that's still the case, projecting pretty much a level, level census.
We're hoping for more.
Hoping for more, wow, yeah.
Conversation I had with Phil Fals this past week, the projection looks better.
Oh, really? They have the Springfield option up there too, right? Looking more to come down here, yeah.
Because of our schedule change.
Yeah, yeah, we are working on some schedule change, which has to be really made to comply with the statutory requirements for career and technical education. But it also may make it more attractive to some of the sending, sending schools. And that's great tuition that we get, use more. No major changes in staffing at the career center. And as you can see, we end up with just essentially the same amount of budget as the year before with three tenths of 1% increase. So if you take all the district-wide, senior high, BAMS, and career center and add it all together, it shows a 9.4% drop. However, there's a big number in there for the special ed. Do you want to elaborate on that just a little?
Sure, yeah. So Act 148 was passed in this past legislative session and that called for essentially aligning the revenues with the expenses at the SU. So you've been accustomed to seeing a fairly significant amount of revenue for special education come to the, to the UHS district. And that offsets what Woody has outlined on the spending side. So if you looked at your handout that I just passed out today and you looked at page two on the revenue section, in the middle, in the middle of the page, as you look at the fiscal year '18 column, so that's one, three columns from the right, you know, coming in, when you look at those revenue assumptions, you see a gap about halfway down the page. No, no money assumed. That's the special ed revenue that is now going to the supervisory union. And you can see it's fairly significant. Just, just looking at the year, fiscal year '17 data there, 372,000 and 2,237,000 and then 350,000. So that's, that's that number that Woody was sharing earlier, nearly $3 million in revenue. So that is, that is going to the SU and then the SU will assess the difference between all costs and that revenue that, that the state sends to the SU. And so it's a much lower assessment that comes back to the high school to carry the cost of special education. So as Woody has indicated, it's really not a reduction in spending. Overall, there is a small reduction in spending when you look at all towns in the Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union, special ed budget is actually down a little bit. But, but the services are very much still intact and that's how we get to page, in the district-wide, the big reduction, page five. As we go from the 4,847, you see page five right in the middle where it says special education. There's a 0200 subtotal for special education, the number for the current year is 4,897. And the new number is 1,790. And that's down 3.1 million. It's, it's down substantially because of the approximately 3 million that we just looked at on the revenue side. That 3 million's going to the SU. The SU's paying all the bills associated with special education on behalf of Wyndham Southeast, BUHS. But then after they apply the state aid, there's 1.7 million that still needs to be paid and reimbursed to the SU. That's, that's the shift that Act 148 does. And after we get this in place over a couple of years, it'll be a lot easier to understand because you'll have an apples-to-apples comparison. There's a little background on that.
I'm just wondering, the three numbers in the middle of page two, if they're all added together, do they amount to that, what you just cited?
Not exactly because, because there's change in both spending and revenue in the new year. So it's nothing static, you know? So the revenue assumptions at the SU will be based on the actual student services that are being planned. That's different than the current year based on the different students. So it's not a, not a, you can't take fiscal year '17 and aggregate those revenues and then just say, does it add up to the '18 period? And the SU board reviewed this plan on the 15th. Some folks were there and, and the SU board did approve the supervisory union budget for fiscal year '18. And that's what allows us to provide these assumptions.
So after you add, put this all together and factor out the special ed, the increase for our three units adds up to about $483,000 on a $25 million budget. So it's about a 1.7% increase. And of that 482, about half of that is the maintenance and plant, plant services that we referred to. And then obviously because there are negotiated contract increases, that's accounts for a good share of it. I also would like to point out on page one, and Frank can help me with this one, is that if you look down at the bottom of the front page of the summary, the last three or four lines talks about the use of fund balance. And you recall that last year, we, we used 700,000 of our fund balance to support operations. And you can see FY '18 is less use of that. We want to maintain a good, solid fund balance. There's times when we may need to use it, but we want to use as little as possible this coming year. And so we have a number of 180,000, which would end up, if it, everything falls along according to plan, we would end up with about 2.5 million in our fund balance at the end of this budget, which should hold us over and be an appropriate balance to carry into the unknown future.
There's a question rolling in now about that piece of the meeting.
Well, there's, there's always different philosophies on fund balance, you know, how much do you send back? But with the way these numbers all sugar out, it allows us to maintain a, a level in terms of the tax, the way it affects taxes. Maybe if you want to just go through that a little bit, the tax piece? You'll see how the, how the numbers all sugar out to a level.
Yes, so the, the email that I sent out on Friday included the taxes and then, and then on Saturday, Friday, the 16th, on Saturday to 17th, we got some more information from the state, they're working hard. But that's on page three of the documents that I handed out. So the, the effect of fund balances is, it shows up here in the way in which we attempt to keep a stable tax rate. So what you've just reviewed is on the first line on this document on the far right-hand column, there's fiscal year 2018 and then there's line, you see line one through 26 there for notes, just so I can easily point you to where I'm looking. So, so we just discussed the 25,359 budget. So assuming if that, if that became our plan, we then reduce the amount that we need to ask the education fund to raise in school property taxes. We reduce that by 5.2 million in revenue. Right, line 10. And so that, that, that revenue comes from page two. And it's essentially everything within the fiscal year '18, 25 million less, the education support grant there. If you just skim that column, you'll see the very large number, 19,161. That's the amount that we need from the education fund to balance the budget. There's also a figure in here that reduces our, our, the amount of revenues that we can include. It's, it's something to do with state payment on behalf of the district for career center. But that's where the 5 million, the 5,212 comes from. So we take our, our spending minus this, these other sources of revenue, which is significant amount, is the tuition revenue. You see right up at the very top of the page, again on page two, there's a million dollars, million fifty in tuition. This would be from our surrounding towns that are not members of union high schools. These are towns like Marlborough who have the choice to send students where they, where the parents wish and many of them come to BUHS. So you see how important it is, that 5.2 million, a substantial amount of that is tuition But anyways, that, that reduces our, our total spending amount down to 20,146. You see that on line 11. And, and we, well, just to complete the funding mechanism, it's really pretty simple math from here on out. It's, it's our spending divided by our equalized students, the 1,161 on line 12, and that's a cost per student figure, 17,349. The, the state compares that number to an index that they announce. That index is, it's just below line 25, it's at 10,076. So they just compare that ratio and they say, well, how, how, what's the relationship between 17,349 and 10,076? And the relationship is, is 1.722, that's our tax rate. So, so the point I wanted to make in terms of the connection to what he was just talking about in terms of fund balance, is the, the board can elect to apply a portion of that fund balance to this pretty simple formula. And you can see the more that we apply in fund balance, the lower line 11 becomes. So the lower line 11 becomes the lower our cost per student. And that's how we can stabilize the tax rate. So in this proposal, we have, we have, you see level funded line 13, which is the key statistic that sets the tax rate. It's the spending per student, line 13. See, they're the same number. And they're the same number because we've used 180,000. And they're the same number because we've used 180,500 as an assumption for the use of fund balance to be, to provide a stable, a stable statistic. And as what he has indicated, this current fiscal year, we use 700,000. The year before, we used 875,000. So you can see that this is a much lower number, and the reason for that is because of this relatively flat spending plan that you have just heard an overview of, and most importantly, an increase in students, in student enrollment. Line 12 is a very important statistic for us. That statistic, as you can see, we're up 44 students who are 3.9%. So if our spending is less than 3.9% growth, our tax rate is going to decline, and that's what you see on line 26. Our tax rate is estimated to be down 3.7%. And that's because our spending is less than our student growth rate. But, you know, we've wrestled with this in the past, and when you look at the history there on that document, page three, you have, the first column is fiscal year 15, and then 16, 17, 18, and you see that we've actually had quite a decline in enrollment. And this statistics, this fiscal year 18 figure puts us back on line 12 to where we were in 2015. Right? So that's why we were using those fairly significant reserves in the interim years. It was to avoid, you know, the fairly significant impact on the tax rate. For school districts that don't have those reserves, they either cut programs or they pass those, that volatility right off to the tax, the tax rate.
And then is there the danger of getting above the cap in the, of the towns that do not either have a fund balance to make a difference, or?
That's right.
Higher tax, higher...
Yeah, so that's on line, right after line 15, there's a 21A, 17,386. That is the penalty threshold. If we spent more than that, we pay twice on every dollar above that in property taxes. So that's a number we always try to stay below, which we are in this proposal.
And doesn't that correlate to the importance of maintaining an adequate fund balance? Because then if you had to, you could use the fund balance to make it more penalized.
Right. That's right. I believe if we didn't use this fund balance, we would be a little bit over that number.
Yeah, last year we would have been. Yeah.
Yeah.
And some, it would seem like a pretty big chunk of money, 2.5 million, but if you look at it on the basis of a 20, 25-plus million dollar budget, it's not a huge amount to have in reserve.
Particularly keeping in mind that we have some fairly heavy capital...
Right.
Investments coming up. For instance, there's a roof project coming up in a few years that will take a quick chunk of money.
Yeah, and one of the, the bigger things that we're facing, as, and this is planned and expected, is the HVAC system, which is, well, again, by the time we have it listed as a $300,000 investment in fiscal year 20, which is only two more years away. And that is to be expected because at that point, the HVAC system will be 16 years old. It's a huge system. This is one of the biggest facilities under one roof in the state, really. So we've allowed for that and a significant fire alarm system upgrade. So the maintenance people are looking, looking ahead, and as to be expected, as a facility, when a facility is brand new, you know, we can get away with maybe 100, 150,000 a year of such expenses. But as we get 55 million dollar setup, as we get further along, the number is going to increase. But we're trying to avoid the deferred maintenance trap, saving money by not doing that stuff, and then it'll come back to bite us eventually. So that's a good point that, you know, we need to have, need to have that, some for that, too.
Would it be at time to talk a little bit about the debt service, where that is now, and the amount owed and so forth?
Yeah, that's in the, in the document. So on page, the very first page, we have the, you know, the total there within the district wide. So on page one, it's the third line down, and you do see it declining, 2,125. That is a 1.6 million dollar principal payment, which goes through 2023. And then the difference is the interest expense. So that's, there's a little more information, not too much, but on page five, that breaks that number down that I just, I just described for you. So on page five, about a third of the way down, you'll see a subtotal that says debt service payments. And there's your 1.6 million and 525,000 for the interest payments. So we used to have a track debt as well, as you know, and that's been fully paid off, so that's not in this plan any further. And there...
So the total debt at 218 will be 11 million.
11 million, yes.
11 million.
Yeah.
So there was some misinformation, I think, in terms of the total debt. It was stated in the paper, 14 million.
Right.
So it's actually 11 million, which is a significant difference.
Yeah. Yeah. This is after this 1.6 million dollar check gets sent off to the bond bank, the balance will be about 11 million, yeah.
When does that actually happen?
Principal payments are due in December.
Oh, so that'd be, at the beginning of the year, the balance of the bond would be 11 million.
Yeah, so December of 2017, a year from now.
Yeah, a year from now.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Any other questions on that, on the budget?
What was the, the number that you referred to? I was trying to find it. Can't even think of what it's called now, but it's 10-something thousand dollars. And that's the reference point that we use when we compare what we're spending per student.
Yes, so page three, it's line, it's the line right below line 25, and that number is called the base ending, base education spending index. They've, they have tried to simplify the funding formula, and they refer to that as the equivalent yield. But that statistic the legislature considers every year, they look at the growth in the grand list, they look at spending projections by school boards across the state, and you can see how pivotal that number is to calculating the amount of property taxes that are raised and sent to the education fund. So they have increased that number by 3.9%. And that's, they've done that probably because there is some growth in the grand list, and they have, they have a few other revenue sources, and if those revenue sources are strong, then they, they can raise this number, and that lowers everybody's tax rates.
What are some of the revenue sources?
For the state? A little out of my territory, but there's a state budget document that you could access. But the vast majority of education fund is, is the school property taxes. Any other questions about the budget? Later on during our regular meeting in the agenda, we have enlisted to, for us to approve the budget, so we'll do that at that point.
I just have one further question. Do the numbers on page one that are below the lines represent totals?
Yeah, so you, which number are you referring to?
Well, I'm just glancing at the first section, which is the district wide.
Yeah, so the 10,959 is the total of the, of the 7 million regular ed portion, the 1.7 million special ed, and then the 2.125 debt service.
So the dollar differences and then the percentage differences should also be totals of those?
Yeah. Yeah. And then the next group is the senior high, so has two subsets of 6.5 million and the 1.9 million, equals the 8.4 total. And then the bands and the career center, we don't, we don't have a subset of data there. Those are, those are just, one number represents the entire program.
And then the totals should be...
Yeah, the 25 million is, is going to be a total of the 10,959, the 8,460, the 3,450, and the 2,488.
And then the dollar percent difference is also...
Yes.
Same system?
Yeah.
That's what I thought, but...
Yeah, you see the same, you can see the same subtotals in the detail of the general ledger document that, that what he reviewed. But one, one thing that I, I like, I always look for is the grand total. And so if you go to page 10, page 10 is coming out of the accounting system. These reports are coming out of the accounting system, and you see the same numbers there in total, 25,359,197, with a reduction of 2,623,804, down 9.4%. Always good to double-check the reports reconcile. And one thing I am, I am very pleased about is the, in many systems, and including this system, we were very much dependent on spreadsheets for the entire budget document, but the principals have really embraced the use of the accounting system budget module, and it provides so much more data integrity and detail to be able to, you know, analyze information and be assured there's no little adding error in the, in the spreadsheet. So, but I appreciate the questions on those things because it's nice when more than one person looks at all of the, all of this detail.
Frank, we're not above the spending threshold, are we?
No, on page three, we're, we're a little bit below. If, if we did not use the 180,000 that, out of fund balance, we would, we would be at 17,500. So the 180,000 fund balance gets us to the 17,349, and the threshold is 17,386.
And was the equalized, is that favorable for us?
Very, yeah, surprising.
I didn't, I didn't hear the final figure.
Yeah.
Up 44.
Yeah.
From 1117 to 1161.
Unfortunately, the, the elementary systems are seeing the opposite. They're seeing pretty, pretty significant decreases, and they're indicating, the state is indicating the proportion of students has shifted more toward the secondary across the state, so this is not unusual. But they don't have the kindergarten kids coming in that is offsetting the larger classes going into the seventh and in some instances, the ninth grade. So we'll see at your local district budgets, a lot higher use of fund balance where they have it to, to the margins.
So at the bottom of page three, that's a relatively favorable outcome for taxes in the, in the towns, is that correct?
Well, yes, I mean, in page, page three, line 26, that $1.72 is down 3%, 3.7%.
Yeah.
But, but the work to be done over the next few weeks is for each of the elementary district boards to meet, and we'll fill in the rest of the document there, the lines below.
Oh, I see.
Line 26, that's their pro-rata share. We don't have that data yet because they aren't this far along as you are in budget development. You know, their votes are a month later, so...
Can you define for me pro-rata in that case? How's it?
Yeah, so the way this formula works is each district has a tax rate based on spending divided by students. But then if you're part of a union, then you take the proportional share. So for example, Bradboro Town, is it just about 50% at the elementary district? So they'll take 50% of their tax rate, and they'll average it with 50% of this tax rate. And that's how you get the actual tax rate that the, that the resident pays. But if you're a town like Guilford, Guilford is still counting grades K through eight, so your proportion is much heavier weighted on the elementary tax rate. So you're more like one-third, two-third.
And, and what we'll have to do is wait for FY 218 on, on the bottom of page three in order to really see what happens in terms of the individual town tax rate.
And I usually populate that data as soon as the elementary boards start having draft budgets considered. But until they do, we only have half of the tax rates. The Guilford Board is considering a budget right now as we speak. Paul Smith is representing the, me basically, on the business side of the conversation. And they're, they got a tough road to home. All right. Is there any other questions related to the budget?
Well, if I may, I'd like to compliment both Bob and Frank. Really, I mean, this is, it's really excellent job.
Well, the finance committee put a lot of time in your part of it.
Well, just your presentation, I'm not going to let you off the hook. You did a good job. Both of you.
Well, I think everybody, I think too, from the business administrators right on down, everybody did, you know, they gave them a certain task and they, and they achieved it, which is great. I mean, it's a good thing all the way around. All right, if there's no objections, we'll just go right into our regular board meeting because it's right about seven o'clock, I think. All right, so I'm going to call us back into session for our regular board meeting at And we've already done, according to our agenda, we've already done the public information form on the budget, so we're at clerk's report. And is there a motion to accept the minutes from December 5th?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any additions, deletions, corrections, changes to those minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions?
Abstained.
Abstaining for?
Absence.
Absence? Absence? Okay. Two abstentions for absence. Okay, minutes are removed. And then communications, is there any communications that can't any board members that they want to share at this time? Okay, we're moving on.
I'm sorry, I need to go back to the minutes.
Okay.
Behind the eight ball here, but I believe it's just one slight correction. It was listed, the next finance committee is November 9th, but I believe that was November 8th.
But we're talking about the minutes from December 5th.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have the wrong, it was December 9th, my apologies.
Okay.
They're absolutely correct, as written.
Okay, excellent, okay.
Actually, in communications?
Yeah.
I don't think that I have to go through with it, but I should probably say that I have been communicating with Donna Russo-Savage about the, you know, what it would mean in terms of the revote possibility in Dumerson or whatever, so kind of interesting information, but it's not really germane for, I don't believe.
Maybe we can talk about it, we can share that when we get to the Act 46 Study Committee Report, how about that?
Yep.
Okay. So let's move into consent agenda, is there a motion to enter consent agenda?
I will move, move into it for a second.
Okay, so Mike and then Russ, all right, and we'll start with Finance, Building and Transportation.
Finance Committee met on December 9th.
We heard that.
At the James Kane Conference Room on Green Street, and we approved warrant numbers 1083, 1085, 1087, and 1088, a total of $513,588.60. We also discussed the revenue side of the budget, and we talked about the solar project at the closed landfill in Bradlboro, and we'll be hearing more about that later.
Great, is that it? All right, moving on to WSCSU Finance Committee.
We, the Finance Committee met last Thursday to go over final details on the budget, which was then presented to the full SU Board, which also met then, and that was approved. A couple of questions came up there, one was, was a question of board members not on the Finance Committee not having, the question was whether they had enough time to review the documents that came out, and where we collected is to ask this question, I think that all of the boards should be asked, is whether you would like to see all the preliminary budgets as it goes along, I mean, in my mind, I sort of think about it the way we do, we have the Finance Committee and then at the end, but anyways, of whether, you know, those are all public records, so if anybody wants to see those at any time, we can do that. If you want it as a matter of course, Frank or I could send those out as they come to the Finance Committee members, or we could do it on a requested basis, so it's a, part is a question of economist's costs and benefits, the benefit of having all this information, the cost is having all this information of filling up your mailbox and those sorts of things, so, I mean, as we develop the next budget, next year in whatever shape or form it comes in, you know, that would be, it'd be good to get feedback if you want, if you want those.
I guess, to me, the difference is between what we did at the SU Board and what we've done with the budget here, where the board looked at it at the last board meeting, and then we looked at it at a public hearing tonight, and it's not voted on until February. It's not, we're given the budget and five minutes later, let's vote on it.
Right, the, I mean, as we discussed at the meeting last, this Thursday, that a difference, there are a couple of differences, the one is that the SU budget does not go to the voters, the SU Board is of the voters, so it is, you know, people who are familiar with budgets and have access to these things on a regular basis. Secondly, it's sort of time-wise, in order to have all various public meetings, you know, the, I mean, the SU Board could meet more regularly, traditionally meets about four or five times a year, I mean, we could add on a bunch more budget meetings to do those sorts of things, but, but, you know, we've got it, the SU budget has to go, and then we have to go, the BUHS has to go, and then it goes to the town in February, so everything is stacked up, and so to get a whole bunch of meetings before, we'd have to start developing the budget probably in July or something like that, when numbers aren't around and rollments, I'm not sure that we have the time to do it, unless we, unless the SU full Board of all six boards want to get together, you know, three times in fall, early winter, I suppose we could do that, but, you know, my point of view is that we all know what budgets look like, we know, every time I come in and report, you know, we had, you know, a report on special ed, we had a report on this, and then if there are questions, then we can, we can go into it, or we can give you those budgets, and maybe we should just mail those preliminary budgets out for you to see and ask questions on, and that's the question, I mean, it's the way that we have been doing it for a long time, which doesn't make it the right way to do it, but given that we're not presenting those budgets to the general public directly, other than through, through the televised meetings and then through the, through our reports, the Finance Committee reports as we go through that, you know, there's that calendar of events that we all have of what those are, and maybe next time when that comes out, we should say at the beginning, I mean, you can see where all those meetings are, of what do you want, what else do you want here? But I don't think we have the luxury of time to have a whole bunch of meetings and come back and review again and again with the full SU Board, unless the full SU Board wants to do that, you and I are both voting members, and you as well, it would be sometimes.
Sean?
I sort of feel, because I was at the tail end of that meeting, and I sort of feel that the SU budget is developed, but then parts of it go to every district, so that you really have the affordability to get familiar with your particular part of the SU budget at your particular district, and, no, that's really, it's our call at this Board anyway, is to make sure that that is all in accordance with what it should be, so, I mean, I think that, you know, that Frank keeps track of everything, but not everybody has to do it, thank goodness. So I think that, you know, if somebody had a specific request, I don't think there's a need to mail it to them, you can email them.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I didn't mean, I didn't mean that specifically.
Yeah, and, but I think with, you know, being on the BUHS Finance Committee, I know I have enough warrants spoken through every month anyway, I'm not interested in seeing every.
And I think it varies board to board, I mean, we did, mentioning the warrants at the SU meeting maybe two ago, there was a request to get the warrants that the Finance Committee approved, you know, just like tonight when we approved those warrants, I haven't seen the warrants, you know, I, we got the committee, and I rely on you guys to do it, some of the towns want to see those, and they express some objections, and now they're getting those every time that we get them, other towns don't want it, and so I think Bradlboro doesn't get it, and I asked you, and you didn't want to get, if you want to get it, you think you'd get them on a, you know, on a regular basis as well, so it varies, you know, and I think it's good that we're responsive to what the minutes are. One thing, when you're talking about developing all the different budgets, one thing that is a change that I was happy to see is in terms of the allocation of a particular special ed funding, and, you know, in the budget itself, as Woody and Frank have already talked about, more and more is getting centralized to the SU, so that the peer educators are now part of the overall SU budget, and so the question of allocation has come up, and we've dealt with that, you know, over the years, and we had various more complicated formula for allocating, you know, based on IEPs and balancing general census and those sorts of things, and as it's getting more centralized, the proposal from the Finance Committee, which was accepted by the full Board, was that special ed funding be allocated just on peer census, so that it in some sense spreads the fluctuations, the ups and downs, I mean, we're at the BUHS Board, you know, we're the biggest school around, and so if a family moves in that has kids with needs, we're big enough so that there's not a huge impact one way or the other on tax rates and those sorts of things, but smaller towns, the fluctuations of people moving out, moving in can have much bigger swings, so that by just doing it by population, those variances are spread across all the towns and the Board, and it's funny, being on the SU Board and being on the BUHS Board, because both those budgets are spread to all the different towns, but in the town budgets, people are much more sensitive to that, so at this point, we're basing just about everything on a rolling two-year average, or just raw census, regardless of what specific needs are, so as kids move around within the district, move into the district, move out of the district, whatever, those are now spread throughout everyone, I think the exceptions of triple E, I think the BUHS budget is out of that one, transportation is directly billed to whatever towns or school districts are using it, but we've made that swing as well, so, and the budget was sort of similarly complicated as all the town BUHS budget in terms of trying to compare this year to the last, and Frank did a spectacular job, and I don't think I said that enough at the last meeting as to the clarity, the patience, the wisdom that he brings to pulling this all together, I mean, you know, Laurie asked, you know, what about these lines on page one, and you know exactly what she's talking about, as you're unable to answer it really coherently, which is, which is great, so what Frank did was to sort of combine, you know, all the special ed funding and expenses and do the year-to-year comparisons, so overall district for the whole supervisory union now, it was down, I don't know, $30,000 or so, and it's down maybe a couple hundred thousand dollar assessment to BUHS, but again, you know, it's, everything's spread out, and so, and it also speaks really highly for the special ed staff at the SU in terms of being able to apply our resources more efficiently across the whole supervisory union, and I hope with the peer educators coming into, under the broader umbrella, that will take place as well. So that's where we were there, the only other thing that I think came up at the SU, you can remind me, is a question of Act 46, which we'll get to, and whether the SU should, the SU Board should take a stand on it, and we, after a fair amount of discussion, decided that, you know, it's probably better that the town take their votes, and then if there's a revote, then we just do our best to make sure information is out there and be as transparent as possible, so.
Mike, do you have a question?
I think so.
Well, finance.
I forgot the original question, but to piggyback on what Russ said, Frank, wasn't the centralized funding and dispensation of that funding, wasn't the whole purpose of that was to even out the fluctuations in local school districts?
Specifically the special ed component?
Special ed component, didn't we think about that last year as well?
Yes, the idea is if you're, again, a single employer, you're able to assign your resources to where student needs are a lot quicker, a lot easier, so that is the overarching thought there, and then in terms of, from the state's point of view, it's really confusing to the public and to the planning process when you have expenses in one entity and revenues in another, and if it was just two entities, that's, you know, not too hard to sort out, but when it's seven entities in our system and, you know, other systems, it's 10 entities, it's a difficult thing for accountability as well. Anything else for WSCSU Finance?
May I, Ruth, when is the next, your Finance Committee meeting?
The next BUHS Finance Committee meeting is this Thursday, I believe it's the 22nd?
Yes, it is.
At 8 o'clock. All right. Central office.
All right, so planning and policy? Has not met? I think so, Teacher Curriculum Committee also hasn't met, I don't think, bands?
No, the bands committee has not met.
Okay, WRCC?
It did meet.
It did meet on the 13th, primarily to review our response to the review of the Career Center, and we were, got the review of that, and that was to be completed, I believe, and has been by a deadline, right?
Correct.
And it's on its way.
Michael, could you please make sure I get in on these emails?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
All right, WSCSU Act 46 Study Committee, so I guess I'll start, and people that were there can jump in as we go, we met this past Thursday after budget, SU budget, SU meeting, I think Putney even had a meeting, I think it was a big met of meetings that night, and we were the last meeting to go, and the Act 46 Committee meeting was pretty short, mostly because of the results of the vote last week about releasing Vernon from BUHS Number Six, because one town, a majority of people in one town voted no to that, Vernon is not allowed to leave BUHS Number Six at this point, they're appealing that to the Secretary of State's Office to see what they can do from that point, and there's conversation in relation to doing a revote in Dumerson related to that, so the committee decided to table any sort of discussion, because anything that we were going to move forward with may or may not change depending on what the results of those things are, and our next meeting is January 4th at 6 o'clock at Green Street, so if anyone wants to come to that, that'd be great, I know there was a number of people that were there for that meeting, I know, Sean, you had something to share?
Well, yeah, I was just sort of interested in the requirements and so forth around the revote and petition and so forth, I got some answers about it, so it's a little bit complicated, I don't know, could you, do you have any clarification on percentages and so forth with the revote? The revote has to be not by a simple majority, but a two-thirds majority?
Right, but I believe it's, I believe it's two-thirds of the prior meeting, the prior votes cast, so the prior votes cast?
Was 100.
Was 100, so.
66?
Yeah, yeah.
So we have 67.
It's still a valid action of the electorate. It seems like that's written to respond to the situation where if just nobody participated in the reconsideration, that it wouldn't be valid unless it had at least two-thirds of the folks that did participate in a prior, you know.
So you could have, it's not dictating the outcome so much as the number of votes cast.
Participating, yeah.
I see.
That's the way I interpreted it.
No, there were 184 votes cast, so you have to have two-thirds of the 184, not two-thirds of 100.
I believe it's two-thirds of the prevailing outcome, but.
That doesn't make sense, but that doesn't mean anything.
Do you have the statute, Sean?
I do.
How many revotes can you do? Many as you want?
It says, how many?
Sure.
Yeah, the revote will not overturn the original vote by a simple majority, rather the second vote overturns the first vote only if it. Rather, the second vote overturns the first vote only if it, in quotation, exceeds two-thirds of the number of votes cast for the prevailing side at the original meeting unless the voters of the municipality approve a different percentage, close quote.
So prevailing side was a hundred.
I couldn't really.
Well, the prevailing side was a hundred, and it's two-thirds of a hundred. And it just means that if you had, if you had fifty-five, you know, noes, so the prevailing side was no. So if you had fifty-five, if you had fifty-five or less than sixty-seven, then it's not a valid, it's not a valid reconsideration. But if you had sixty-eight on the prevailing side, noes, but you had sixty-nine yeses, you've got a reconsidered vote.
I see. Yeah. Thank you. A little complicated.
Yeah. So.
So how many revotes can you have?
I believe you can only have two.
But I think that's the other thing that I was concerned about, was that the revote will occur after, or, yeah, I think it will occur after the petitions have to be submitted or the representation to the Unified Board. So that added a little bit of complication.
Yeah, I think it means the merger date would have to be pushed into April.
April, I think it was going to be April 11th, yeah. So not town meeting, as we talked about before. And, yeah, Ron distributed a timeline calendar about, you know, the timeline going forward with consideration of the notification.
Anything else from anybody else that was at the Act 46 meeting last week? Any questions related to it, any of it?
Yeah, that's a good question.
What's the basis of the revote?
Well, anybody can have a revote if you do five percent of the, on the grand list, the checklist. I think it's five percent, if five percent of the people sign it, then that will trigger a revote. But then there's a thirty, forty-day window, so after the petitions go to the town clerk, it has to be, it's either no less than thirty, no more than forty days before the vote occurs.
So that process has happened, they've received the petition?
No, I don't think so.
But there was, at our meeting last, because remember, the vote was last Tuesday, we, Act 46 met on Thursday night, so we knew the results of that vote, but there was already conversations about a revote. And there was also the conversations that Vernon had made requests of questions to the Secretary of State's office about what are their recourse since they were voted no, if there wasn't a revote or if there is a revote, what can they do to maintain what they, to do what they want to do? So we, at the Act 46 Committee meeting, decided that we couldn't really have any sort of forward, any movement, because we needed to have questions answered. Will there be a revote in Dummerston, or won't there be that part of it? What will the Secretary of State's office tell Vernon as far as what their options are? So we just had to, we just have to wait.
And Mike Ebert was at the meeting, and he was very discouraged that one town had stopped the possibility of them leaving the Union. And so he gave his, I thought it was really well-stated, you know, he gave his feeling that, you know, what he wanted to happen definitely didn't happen.
Right.
And the reason Dummerston probably voted not to let Vernon out, isn't it because they don't want the merger, or a certain faction doesn't want the merger? And they're using Vernon's vote as a way of delaying the merger.
Some speculation was expressed on that.
Yeah, there was definitely some people that suggested that was possibly the motivation.
Well, Mike said, actually, Mike said that the town of Dummerston has used the vote to not, I mean, just like stop everything. And Mike was very discouraged about the fact that that was the reason for the vote cast the way it was. So it's, you know, it's contentious, and things to bad.
But I think Mike also did a nice job, too, in saying the fact that Vernon's not unhappy with the relationship that it has with its neighboring towns or with the SU. He was really clear about that, and I thought that was really, well said by him, that they, that the voters in Vernon, just the people in Vernon just feel like it's, the school choice is such a strong part of their identity that they don't want to give that up. But they didn't want, they don't want this to be a contentious thing, and they want to, and they want to continue to, you know, if they were allowed to leave, their intention was to work within the statutes to contract with Windows Southeast or whatever the new entity becomes, if it becomes something different, to provide all the same services they have now, but pay for those in a different way as a contracted service, you know? And the suggestion is, is that based on the fifty-plus-year history, that financially it won't be a drain to BUHS Number Six, because if seventy-five to eighty percent still continue to tuition, come to BUHS anyway, that they'll be tuitioning in. So it won't be, there won't be a revenue deduction.
I went to the last Act 46 forum at Gold Grove also, and it was very clearly laid out, because a lot of people were asking about whether the debt service would be handled if it was a tuition basis. And basically, the outcome was, yes, it definitely would. It would not change, it would not impose any more of a debt service on any of the other towns, which is why I was interested in knowing what the total amount of debt service is going to be. It would not affect the other towns at all. And it couldn't, because it just, it wouldn't happen.
Tuition would take care of it.
So it was a false premise, unfortunately. I think that influenced a lot of individuals in the town of Dummerston to vote no, don't let Vernon go.
It's one small sticking point. I think Vernon has enjoyed school choice for so long, and it's a really, really valuable thing to the town. And it really hasn't hurt anybody, or hasn't put anybody out in any other district. And I can't speak for everybody in Vernon, but I think if the state could find its way to agree to that, everything would follow and go smoothly as far as staying in the Union.
All of the schools in the whole state that have school choice are facing the same battle with the state, and the state just doesn't want to listen.
It's very frustrating for everybody, I think. All right, something else on Act 46? Is there, is there a motion to approved consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded, moved and seconded by the District. All those in favor of approving consent agenda, if you can say aye?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions?
None.
All right, let's move on to administrative reports. Why don't we start in the middle with the high school, and then you can introduce your guest, or our new, our new members.
Yes, yes. So I'd like to let Crystal do her report, if that's okay. So I'm pleased to introduce Crystal Long, who's from Council. And Crystal's been a very active member of the BUHS community in theater and other advocacy endeavors. And she is certainly capable of speaking for herself, so I will let her do that. Crystal, welcome.
Thank you. Hi. Wow. BCTV, right?
Yeah.
Excellent. Well, I'm Crystal Long. I'm a member of the BUHS Student Council. And I would just like to say, the BUHS Student Council has been sort of rocky as far as attending the school board meetings. So I will be attending them from now on to represent Student Council. And if I'm not available, then I will appoint someone else to be here to fill my shoes. So, yeah, hi. It's very nice to be here, and, yeah, just as far as what I've heard so far, it seems like there's incredible amounts of work being done.
Do you know who we all are?
I, I'm reading the name tags.
Should we go around? I'm Russ Janis, and I'm from Bradenboro.
Okay.
And I'm Ann Deacon from Putney.
Great. Hi, Crystal.
I'm Lori Cardrey from Bradleboro.
And I'm Sean Murphy from Guilford.
And Mike Collier from Vernon.
Ruth Barton from Dummerston.
Bob Woodworth from Bradleboro.
Ricky Davidson, Bradleboro.
And I'm Frank Rucker, the Business Administrator.
Michael Burnett, the Director there at the Curricula.
I think you know me.
I know.
You probably know me by.
I know. Awesome. Well, it's just, it's so, like, eye-opening to see how much work is being done behind the scenes, how much maintenance, how much money is being put into every single corner of making sure that the school is what it is. And I just want to say that I appreciate the work that you're all doing here. And, you know, this is kind of the adult version of Student Council, so I understand why I'm here. It's really interesting, but it's like, it's, yeah. So I am here to talk about Student Council and what we've been doing so far. We just recently ended our Feed the Thousands sort of run. Each year, Student Council sort of spearheads the whole thing. We begin it by having an assembly kickoff sort of thing. So we have presentations, and we talk about the non-perishable food items that are supposed to be delivered to certain locations across the school, and that you could also make money donations alongside the food donations as well. And we really try to make sure that the school, all the schools involved, and, yeah, we try to make sure that everyone knows that what they're doing is not sort of, it's not something that's too far from themselves, that it's something that is a community-wide issue, a school-wide issue, and that they should take it personally. And so we, we did a count of our food items, and it was less, unfortunately, it was less than what we had expected to make. And this was caused by a couple of things. There was one day where we didn't have school. And so that might, you know, someone might have, you know, packed all these food items and planned to bring it in on that, what was it, that Monday? And that just, that wasn't an option anymore. So, and also this year, the entire Feed the Thousands week was cut short, I noticed. And one of the things that Student Council does is that we go to each advisory, so it's like homeroom of the school, and we do advisory outreach, which is basically speaking to the members of that advisory and telling them where they can drop off their food items, where they can donate money to Feed the Thousands, and encouraging them to do so. And there were a couple teachers where they were surprised that I was doing Feed the Thousands outreach so soon, because they were planning on doing it later. So the deadline was sort of cut short. And then there was another day where it was, it was too cold to come into school, so we had a delay, and then the truck was, there was just, so there were a lot of sort of little hiccups in the project Feed the Thousands this year, but we managed to complete that. And I still encourage everyone here to donate non-perishable food items to your local, you know, food centers that you see. If you see there's a bin or something where that's available, please take advantage of that. And, yeah, so the President of Student Council is Ryan Taggart, and then Vice President is Jack Spanierman. So at some point, I'll have them at this meeting as well. And, yeah, so I spoke about Feed the Thousands. Let's see. The next thing that's in line for Student Council is probably the Extracurricular Fair that we usually host. And that's just, that's all, we invite all of the clubs in the school. And it's usually at the Multi-Pervert Room, the BUHS Multi-Pervert Room, where they set up, and the students can go down there, their class can take them, or they can ask for a pass to go to the Extracurricular Fair, where they can get introduced to different clubs and activities happening at BUHS, so they can sign up and get involved. And this year, I'm also a part of the National Honor Society at BUHS. And this year, in one of our meetings, someone brought up having the National Honor Society as a part of the Extracurricular Fair. Because one of our main concerns is having National Honor Society be out there as a name for people, so people understand what National Honor Society is and what it does, and so that underclassmen as well can also be encouraged to join when it comes to time for them to apply, to join. And so having National Honor Society as a part of our Extracurricular Fair would do that. And so, yeah, we're going to speak about that in our next meeting by Student Council. And I guess the biggest thing with that is that, you know, National Honor Society isn't just a club you can sign a name and join. It's something that you have to go through a tremendous process of making sure that you have all your community service hours and making sure that you're part of a lot of different sections, so athletics and arts and, and just, there's a whole essay portion and sort of these letters of recommendation, like it's something that's much larger than just being a part of a club and signing your name on an email list or something like that. So, yeah, we're going to.
Is there a GPA qualification for BUHS?
There is, there is definitely a GPA qualification. And that holds through, that holds true even after you're accepted into the National Honor Society.
So you're accepted and get moved out?
Yeah. If you drop, if you don't maintain those levels of what's expected of you, then they are. Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, I think that's it.
All right, thank you so much, Crystal.
You're welcome.
Want to take over?
Sure.
With your report?
Sure. So last Friday, we had our eighth annual poetry at law competition, and that was organized by Peter Canizaro, who did a phenomenal job. He teaches poetry here, he's our English Department Chair. And they did some incredible poems, and we were also honored to have Ricky Davidson, one of our judges. But one of the real treats was we had Charde Nord, who is the Vermont Poet Laureate, and he actually came and spoke and kind of shared some poetry with us. I'm pleased to announce that Kaia Dean will represent the state to BUHS. She won the competition. She did a phenomenal reading, and as did the rest of them. You know, Kaia certainly has the poise and stage presence that really helped her out, so congratulations to her. Along those same lines, on that same stage in February, we'll be seeing Spamalot. They've begun reversing Spamalot. It is a raucous Monty Python farce. So certainly, I would encourage you to see that if you can. That will start the Thursday right before break. There'll be shows Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evening. And, you know, Mr. Krampsky and Mr. Rice have promised me that it will certainly be memorable. I don't know what that means. It will be great. One of the things that happened this summer is Vermont Interactive Television has vacated BUHS. As a matter of fact, statewide, VIT has kind of collapsed. And we turned that into an opportunity. We've actually, are in the process of moving our BUHS TV studio into that space. And I have to give Allison Cram, Toby Moore, and their TV production class a lot of credit. They've moved a lot of equipment, they've begun to set it up, and that new studio is about three times the size of the old one, and it is gorgeous. And when it's finished, I would invite the Board to come and visit it. And they're working on a new backdrop, and they're working on figuring out how to put a huge flat-screen TV on the wall without it falling down, because that wall was done with no studs. So kind of an interesting construction that was used, and so we're kind of working that out. On Friday, the Bradleboro Police Department presented a check to BUHS for students supporting veterans. The umbrella organization is home at last. On November 18th, we had a BUHS Players versus Bradleboro Police Department. basketball game. And, um, that raised over $500. And Brad PD was kind enough to deliver a check to us on Friday afternoon for that. Uh, I will tell you, at halftime, the score was BUHS 40, the police 8. So our students very kindly offered to switch the score. And so we spotted them a few points for the second half and ended up nearly tied. Uh, I, I have to thank the police, I have to thank Chief Pritchard, especially. Did a phenomenal job of organizing this. Mike Carrier was a player. He was one of the other organizers. Uh, the police provided pizza and drinks for the teams afterwards. And it was a great event. And we're hoping to do it again in the spring. So, uh, if you see a Bradleboro policeman, thank them for their effort. We welcome Governor Shumlin tomorrow. Um, Governor Shumlin is coming to visit to meet with Mike Auerbach and his students from Project Atlantic. They did a statewide conference on sustainable energy in towns and statewide. Um, they did that conference a few months ago at Lake Maury. And Governor Shumlin was present and they managed to get him to come down tomorrow and, uh, kind of sit with the students and talk about sustainable energy, talk about energy policy in Bradleboro and in the state. Kudos to Mike Auerbach. He's done Project Atlantic now for several years. And, uh, that project just keeps getting better. And he keeps getting more and more input from various stakeholders in the state. I do have copies of the latest version of the Bradleboro Beacon to pass around. And I also have copies of our latest parent newsletter to distribute. Take a second, um, and read those when you get a moment. Um, last but certainly not least, um, you know, I'm sad to report that over the weekend, uh, we found, we got word that longtime English teacher in the Department, George Lewis, passed away.
George?
Yep, uh, just passed away. So I would ask the board to, um, acknowledge his service and the work he did here at BUHS. You know, his work here still resonates among many of the teachers who remember him fondly. Thank you.
Thank you. How about BAMS?
All right.
Hi, everyone. Um, I wanted to thank Crystal for reminding me about the Project Feed the Thousands. We also ran it at BAMS, the student leadership at BAMS. Um, ran, uh, Project Feed the Thousands this year and, uh, the students worked hard to collect, um, food. And yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to kind of collect that kind of stuff from, from families that are also, a lot of them struggle on themselves. But, uh, we're also having, uh, something called Penny Wars, which is, uh, also sponsored by the leadership, student leadership. And, and basically the four teams kind of compete against each other with these rules. And they have these big canisters and they, um, they try to, essentially they're donating change. Um, and it's a little competition to see which team, um, wins, um, raises the, the most money. So that stuff donated to, uh, local charities. Flo Levin, who's a teacher in our PEE program, she's been, uh, running up this holiday shop for a few years. And, um, I know they definitely run it at like Vernon Elementary School, these holiday shops, and I don't know which other elementary schools do them. But basically people donate things and the students can cash in, um, these like BAMS bucks, which are like reward money, uh, for, for doing good deeds. And they cash in the BAMS bucks for gifts in the holiday shop so students can buy gifts for family members and friends and stuff. And Flo has done a really nice job setting that up. Today was the first day of sales. So, so it's, it's cute. It's nice. And there's some nice gifts in there. Um, basketball's begun for middle school. There, there are three boys teams this year and, and two girls teams based on signups and still a lot of kids on each team. So it's great to have those kind of numbers. And I think they have home games tomorrow, at least some of the teams. Uh, our, oh, I did report on this last time, that they just wrapped up their circus residency, our intensive needs. Um, I believe I mentioned that last time. But, uh, it was a really nice program, students in our intensive needs, um, programming. We contracted with this woman named Erin Mail O'Keefe. And, uh, she came to work with students and they presented to, um, their families and lots of classes at the end of last week. Basically, they learned circus skills and, and, um, many other skills embedded within that. It was a two-week unit. And Caroline Belcher and Junie Pereira, who are two special educators, they ran that, did a really nice job. Finally, Riley Goodmood, our new, um, new this year music teacher. Um, worked with, uh, nine students who auditioned for districts and they all, uh, all nine made it. Um, so let's see, Jasmine Weagle, Brianna Paul, Amara Vargas, Eliana Merson, Abe Morodel, Waylon Lynn Adams, Violet LaCroy, um, all made it. And Sam Friedas Egan and Kim Ammon were, uh, first, first place overall kind of auditions for their instruments, so their sections. So congratulate all of them. And, um, that's what's going on at BAMS. Any questions?
All right. Thank you so much. All right, let's go to the career center.
So the WRCC also participated in Project Feed the Thousands this past month. And I want to thank Betsy Gentile for organizing this event for the Career Center and also Future Business Leader of America students for picking up, uh, all the food in our classrooms this year. This past Thursday, Ray Dunn, Anne Dorn and Amy Anthony attended the Annual Associated Industries of Vermont Conference in Montpelier at the State House. The focus of this conference was to look at the future of advanced manufacturing in the state of Vermont. And some of the key speakers there were Governor-elect Phil Scott, Pat Molten, interim, uh, president for BTC, to name a couple, uh, key speakers. And they really got a nice insight of what needs to happen in, at the Career Center level and also at the state level to help increase the awareness of this need in our state. And also to help educate our parents and students on the importance of this industry and the stigma still attached with manufacturing, that it's a dirty job, which is not, it's, could become a, you know, really advanced technological career path for a lot of individuals. So they got a lot of great information to move forward on, uh, which we'll incorporate in our outreach for our advanced manufacturing program. So thanks to all those for attending. Future Business Leaders of America else have been working, uh, long hours to help Santa Claus write their Santa letters. Some of you may, uh, purchase some of those letters for your family members. And they, they enjoy this fundraiser and it's really nice for the students to give back. And it's, uh, it's a fundraiser that FBLA has been doing for over 20 years here at the Career Center. So, and a lot of community members will come back every year for this fundraiser. It's really nice for the community. And speaking of FBLA, I want to congratulate Mary Beth Cornell. She is a sole FBLA advisor this year. And she has been invited and asked by a former student of hers to attend a legislative luncheon at, in Capitol, on the Capitol Hill in DC in February. And to speak about the importance of career technical education. And, uh, just the student is, uh, that she had over 20 years ago is Warner Thomas. Some of you may know him. And he is a CEO of a hospital system in New Orleans, Louisiana. And he, he offers the Career Center a, a nice substantial scholarship every year at the, at the end of the year, award ceremony. Just want to show that, show that the impact of teachers have on students, that they remember their teachers 20-plus years later and acknowledge them in a fashion such as this. It's a real honor for Mary Beth to be asked to join, uh, one of her students from so long ago. And she'll represent CTE well in DC. So congratulations to Mary Beth. And, uh, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Um, Frank, is there anything else for, from Central Office?
No, I don't think so.
Career technical education.
Oh, okay. CTE.
Um, the only. And the other thing that I was gonna share under the board report, um, Steve mentioned it also, was the passion of George Lewis that, um, because he was such a longtime teacher here and I believe he started the opera program, didn't he? That's still going on?
Yeah, traveling to the Met.
Yeah, traveling to, going, taking students to the Met and doing that. So that program every year, that was something, that was one of George's passions, was, was opera and exposing kids, especially kids from a rural community that aren't exposed, something like that, to take them to New York City and, uh, and have them experience that was definitely a passion of George's. So, um, I know my thoughts and prayers have been with him and his family.
That was kind of an icon in town of Guilford. He had, he was involved in so many things.
Yeah. Wonderful man, who gave so much to so many kids over the years in this building. All right, um, moving on to old business, is there any, or unfinished business? Is there any unfinished business? We don't have anything on our agenda, but I'm just making sure we didn't, that we forgot something. Let's see. So under new business, um, we have a variety of things. Um, and the first one on our agenda list is, we've already had our budget discussion. Um, but is there a motion to approve the budget as presented this evening?
Several.
Removed by Lori?
Second.
Seconded by Anne. Is there any discussion, further discussion?
I would just say that we probably ought to list the number and that being $25,359,197, unless it's changed. And of course, it's being.
No. Okay, good. Excellent. It's still the same, two hours later. Good. All right, um, so it's been moved and seconded, no more further discussion. So, um, all those in favor of approving the budget as presented, seeing if everybody's saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Seeing none. All right, pass the budget. Um, there's two little things to do before we do the big thing. Um, one of those is Barb sent to me the attendance list for the year because that will be printed in the report that goes at our February annual meeting. Um, so as, if we could pass this around and then we can make sure that it gets back to Frank before we leave tonight, so he can take it back to Barb or to Central Office. Just if you wouldn't mind initialing off next to your name or at the end, at the end of the column like I just did, um, that, that seems right to you. And if there's any sort of discrepancies, we can deal with that before it gets printed into the, um, thing, um, in the, in the big book. The other thing is, it was pointed out to me that our next scheduled meeting is January 2nd, which is a no-school day. And typically, we don't meet on non-school days. So I wanted to get a sense of, from the board and from the administration, about meeting that day, not meeting that day, moving that date, moving our meeting to a different day, um, which is, can be problematic when people start comparing their books and their, their schedules. But what are people's thoughts?
Our, our meeting on the 16th, which would be the second meeting, falls on Martin Luther King Day as well.
So, yeah, we're, so we're.
So we just meet in February.
See you in February.
We have the annual meeting and we generally don't have the second one.
Yeah, we usually only have one meeting in February because of the, because it's the annual meeting and it's off schedule. So, so it would be good to at least try to get in one meeting in January. We could.
What about the ninth?
The ninth, we could do, we could potentially do the ninth. Um, is there, does anybody have, would there be an issue with us meeting on the second? From the school or from everybody?
The second or the ninth?
Depends on the ski conditions.
Okay.
Sorry, that was Mr. Rocker that said.
That's definitely an issue. All right.
Second's fine.
The second, Monday or the second?
The actual second.
Yes, either.
So what's the sense of the board?
Fine with me.
Fine with me. All right. So why don't we plan then to keep, I don't hear any major objections, but we keep January 2nd as our regular meeting? And that will be our only meeting in January unless we need to do something and then we can do something later in the month? Does that make sense with everybody? So we'll do January 2nd. So in two weeks, we will meet for our regular meeting, regular night. And then we will not meet on Martin Luther King Day. But if we, there needs to be something, another meeting in January because we need to take up any sort of, anything that comes before us, we can do that. Because also the 23rd, which is the following Monday, is also, is also a non-school day. It's an in-service day, so faculty and staff would, would be in the building in theory. But if there's a no-school day then as well, so. January's a, a month that's hitting us hard with three, three Mondays of no school and out of the five. Does that work for everybody? So we will meet on January 2nd and then we will only meet again in January if need be. And we'll do it later in the month, 23rd or the 30th, after Martin Luther King.
Sounds good.
Okay.
What's the big thing?
So the big thing is, last thing on our agenda, which is the landfill solar project discussion and possible action. And Frank is gonna lead us through this discussion. I know he's already talked to finance about this. Yes?
Yeah.
So the finance, so the finance committee has already gotten some discussion related to this, but. All right. Collier?
Do you want me to come in and speak?
Thank you.
Probably just as well as you do.
Okay.
We have reviewed it. Um, this is, uh, quite a document here.
Yes, so this is a, a net metering agreement, a proposed agreement. It's, it's patterned after what we talked about about a year ago with the, uh, with an earlier, uh, net metering opportunity that we considered. So it's, it's the same law that we spent a fair amount of time discussing at the board meeting. If you recall, it was part of a bid process, um, with a consortium of schools. Um, and the successful bidder was Sun Edison, unfortunately. As with a few developers, solar array developers, they, um, declared bankruptcy. And, uh, we're not able to move forward with our, uh, with the proposal that they had been awarded. And that affected several schools, um, across the state. So, um, the, uh, the solar net metering has continued to have developed, um, capacity in state Vermont and, uh, the Public Service Board has reviewed, uh, rules for administering these net metering contracts. This proposal is unique because it's cited on a landfill and it has a more favorable, uh, return for the, um, participants like us, the Bradleboro Union High School, than the non-landfill, um, opportunities. The other thing that's sort of, uh, unique about this is, um, after December 31st of this year, uh, the Vermont, um, incentives are, are reduced. So this, this project qualifies for the, this, what's called the Vermont Adder, another four cent credit that, uh, is, um, received by the participants of the net metering project. We don't, we certainly don't have to approve this this evening. The vendor that we're working with, Encore Renewable, it's a Burlington-based, um, energy servicing, uh, group, along with, uh, Sky Solar, uh, which is the developer who would, would actually finance the, the construction, have indicated that a, a January approval is, is fine. But if, if you did want to move forward this evening, you certainly, certainly could. I had not thought that this, uh, would be a, um, a, a totally risk-free. I had not thought that this would be a totally risk-free adventure for our school district in this earlier form. This proposal was part of the 11 entities that bid on our request for solar net metering a year ago. And they had, this particular proposal came in as a fixed price. And with that term, just like oil, I wouldn't recommend fixing a price for oil for 20 years into the future and I wouldn't recommend it for electricity. I believe this firm must have received a fair amount of that sort of feedback because they did modify this contract and address that concern. So on page 12 of this contract that you have, I'll just read the excerpt of that. Let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 paragraph down, or maybe the second one up from the bottom. Membership payment means the monthly payment made by the customer to the company is determined by multiplying the consumer energy output, the customer's energy output by 13.9 cents per kilowatt hour. However, under no circumstance shall the membership payment exceed the net metering credit provided by the utility. That's the key point. In the event that the membership payment would exceed the net metering credit provided by the utility, then the membership payment shall be adjusted to equal the net metering credit, the net metering credit provided by the utility. So what that means is this Sky Solar builds a solar array. They generate a whole bunch of electricity. That electricity is associated with our consumption of kilowatt hours here at UHS. Annually, we consume about $300,000 worth of electricity. They would issue us a credit of about 19 cents per kilowatt hour and we pay them for that credit 13.9. So you see, we get a discount of 19 cents and we buy that for 13.9. So it's a substantial discount under today's rates. It's about 27%. So, you know, it's about, that's a substantial amount on a $300,000 bill. My concern was, well, what if, what if the credit that we get in the future drops below 13.9? That's no good if we're paying them 13.9, but we could buy it from Green Mountain for 12 or 10. But that's what this provision protects us from. So it's essentially a risk-free endeavor. If there is a failure to perform, the contract indicates that we have no obligation to, you know, pay for the solar array that's built and that we are essentially participating in what's a regulated project by the Public Service Board of Vermont, so. Initially, I'm also suggesting that we don't, we don't drop our whole $300,000 bill into this. We drop maybe 80% of it. So that if we put in LED lighting and we do whatever becomes available in three or four or 10 years from now and it reduces our load, that we will not put ourselves in a position where we've said we need to buy more than we actually consume. That would be problematic.
Is it possible to negotiate that into the contract? That it would be that much of a assertive statement? That in the event that we drop to a certain level, that, not the payment, not the price versus the payment, but the consumption?
Well, they, the way net metering is committed to, it is a percentage of the project. So this back sheet that you have here identifies to what extent would BUHS utilize the productive, the productive capacity of the field. And if you look at that first set of data there, you'll see that they have the use factor of 80%. But I guess my point is that you are committing to a particular percentage of what the field produces. And so once, once we make that commitment, it's not something that, they can't easily, you know, respond to having to find other participants at a future date. So we have to negotiate that on the way in and we can. We can say 70% or we can say we only want half of our bill. So that is up to this group. They're recommending 80% and I agree that that's a, that's a reasonable place to start. There are provisions if unforeseen circumstances occur and we simply don't need that much energy that we can. There's a negotiations process to go find other offtakers. It's something to be avoided, you know, and that's why you want to start conserving. You know, there's a lot of stuff coming down the pipe too about like heat pump technology that would consume a lot more energy, electricity, but it would alleviate buying wood chips. A lot of bus fleets are now going to electrically base. So the probability of increase in consumption is also out there as well. So it's, you know, mitigating risk on both sides.
I'd like to make a motion that the BUHS District 6 agreed to the net metering agreement of Wyndham Solid Waste Management District Group Net Metering Project and go forward with the idea.
Second?
Seconded, any further discussion?
Can we walk away anytime we want on this agreement or you can't?
Well, no, once you make the commitment, you know, they're going to build the solar array. They're gonna spend a lot of money to generate the electricity and there are termination provisions, but it should not be based on, just because you don't feel like it is. The termination provisions are 7.2 and you can see.
What page?
Page 5.
Did you say 20? How many?
It is a 20-year commitment.
What are the student projections that far out? Do we go that far out?
Student projections.
How far out do we go with those?
Do we have data on historical projections? Yeah, we're assuming.
Those kids haven't been born yet.
Usually go out a few years only.
Yeah, and the state data is suggesting that the, sort of the bottom of this trend that Vermont has seen is still out a couple of years, two, three years. And that's based on looking at birth rates and associating that with a grade level. You know, right now, I think our average grade level is about 7,000 students, you know, and it's, it's still, still there.
But regardless of what happens, this facility is not, all of a sudden, we're not gonna just pull the switch down and not bring electricity. It is not, no matter what. And as you mentioned, there are all kinds of technology that could use electricity as an alternative for what we now use, either a chip or a fossil fuel production of electricity. We're gonna need the electricity. There's no question about it. And I'm interested in saving money for the district if possible. A $300,000 electric bill is a big electric bill. So if you have the possibility of saving money and the risks are basically nonexistent, I cannot see any reason not to go forward. And the reason I made the motion now is that if we miss, for some reason, if we don't have a quorum in January, being January 2nd, and if we miss the deadline, unfortunately, we might be, we might be losing this opportunity.
Ruth?
Well, here again, there are some people here who haven't seen this thing until tonight. I would think they'd wanna have some time to look it over.
Right, what, the estimate say roughly around 80,000, you think?
Yeah, that last page on the FAR column, it shows the savings. So 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 column in there, 70,000, 74,000, 79,000. So those numbers are the annual savings if we subject 80% of the bill to this net metering contract. And the reason why the numbers grow is the assumption that if there's inflation in the, in the utility rates, because this is fixed price. So we're gonna buy electricity for 13.9 cents for 20 years. This projection shows that if there was inflation, we're still paying 13.9 cents and we get the benefit of the credit, the growing credit.
And it could be deflation, I suppose.
And that's why I wanted to see, you know, the provision that we have on the downside protection.
Is the finance committee vetted this?
Yes, we haven't reviewed this entire contract. We reviewed the key numbers that go along. I just wanted to ask if you would clarify again that there's a December 31st, things change, but we can approve this, we could approve this in January. How, how does that work?
Yeah, I've indicated to the, to the groups that provided the contract that it's likely the board would want another meeting to consider this. And they have written assurances that a January approval meets, knowing that I've met with the finance committee and that we looked at this a year ago and we, you know, we were, we approved it a year ago, the same concept, just a different vendor. So they reserved a portion of the, of the field.
Oh, okay, they've got, okay, yeah, that's how.
So we're within the December 31st deadline regardless?
Yeah, that's what they indicated.
How similar is this contract to the one we approved last year?
It's very similar, it's not identical. It is, it has been reviewed by attorneys, but unlike the last one, Paul Giuliani was one of the attorneys that looked at a statewide contract. He was not part of the group that looked at this one. Although I understand that Michael McGillian, he's a member of the Dummerston School Board, he's offered to review this as well and comment.
On that last page, when you look at the chart, when you look at the savings, if you go down 10 years, it increases and then it drops by over half and then it starts to increase again for 10 years. Why, why is that happening?
Yes, so that's the, that's for the contracts that are being committed after December 31st, that's the impact of losing the Vermont incentive, the adder. So in 10 years, in 10 years, this contract provides for that extra Vermont incentive and then that incentive goes away.
So the incentive is a 10-year incentive?
Yes.
And we're still in time for that?
Yes.
Is that what you just asked? Do you know what Michael, does Michael specialize in energy law or?
He works with Bob Fisher. All right, any other, we have a motion on the table. Heard a lot of stuff answering questions since then. Any other questions, thoughts? People feeling comfortable to vote or?
I really don't, I don't really know enough about the issue. I've never, I don't know the research of, I don't know how long solar energy's gonna be viable. I don't know if something's gonna supplant it. I just, I don't know enough, but I'm probably never gonna know enough, so. Whatever the board desires.
Would it rust?
I was just gonna ask, I mean, what the finance committee has, you haven't looked at the full contract, but sort of what the other options are. Are there other, other providers that may be making offers to us? Are there, you know, is there competition out there? There was a year ago, but I don't know if there is now, those sorts of things. I mean, and I'm perfectly willing to take the advice of the finance committee. I'm just wondering if you feel comfortable with.
I know a little background because we were among the finance committee and Frank did bring it up with the competitive energy services, I believe.
Right.
And at that time, it seemed like a good deal. Unfortunately, that one had some issues, but I can almost say with a great amount of certainty that this solar field is going to be constructed. And it is, what is the total megawatts?
Five megawatts.
Five megawatts, so it's a, it's a big unit. And I know, I know from my own experience, because I've been interested in solar for a long time, that if you had, I happen to be able to put a very small rate, I'm getting more per kilowatt hour than people that do it later. In other words, sometimes if you wait, then unfortunately, you don't get a sweet deal. And, you know, for me, it doesn't really make that much difference. But I think that if you have the opportunity to get involved with a known entity of industry and you do not do it and you lose the money, then it's regressed. I mean, that's the skate park syndrome in Brattleboro, I think. So, you know, you can talk about some forever, but this is an obvious, it's an obvious savings that would come to the people that live in this, in WSESU. If we turn our backs on it, we're really turning our backs on the people that pay the bills. I think it's unconscionable. I'm in favor.
Well, I think that maybe we're from lack of knowledge and understanding, which is, we're not the only ones that don't really understand these things. That we may be all looking for a snake in the woodpile and having had one, or a snake in the electric system, but, you know, we may have had one that went south because of the vendor, but I think from what, at least I have looked at this enough, this process enough to trust that it's been vetted not only by Frank, who has spent quite a bit of time on this, but other schools. So we're not leaping off into some land of unknown. And it would seem that the protection is in here. And unless the whole world goes topsy-turvy and we don't use any electricity or who knows what's gonna come up, but I think those likelihoods are minimal. And based on, also on Sean's understanding of this, which he has a better understanding than perhaps some of us do, I would feel comfortable, go ahead and proceed with it.
I was just gonna say, the other offer, I did invite Encore Renewable Energy to join us tonight. Jesse Stoll is the representative. He wasn't able to attend. He did say that he's available by phone, so if we did want to do any kind of a phone question, we could do that, but, but I could also ask if he is available January 2nd. I'm done.
Lori, Shannon, before.
My only concern is the risk. I think that I would be very happy to vote in favor of this agreement, but for the 20-year term, so I do have some concern about our risk over that long of a period. And I was just trying to review what the termination provisions look like. Some sort of act of God, like you said, somebody said, you don't know. Maybe we won't even have such a thing as electricity in between now and the next 20 years. So, I mean, what, what would be the contingency in that event? You know, if the grid went down? You know, if the grid went down and no one's getting electricity, are we still being though?
Right, and that's where it says no, you know, that's a good concern. And this is where, where I read you the provision that says under no circumstances will we pay more than the amount that the utility bills. So, that's an important provision for mitigating this. The other thing related to changing in technology, 20 years is a very long time. And so, in my sense was that if we're saving $70,000 to $80,000 a year for the next 10 years, that will substantially offset any sort of a reset that may be in the future that is unknown today. So, if we capture those savings over even the next five years, it's a very substantial down payment for managing any sort of a future unknown. And there seems to be nothing in the immediate horizon that says that we're less, going to be less dependent on electronics and electrical systems. It seems like we are accelerating more toward that than away from it, especially with the concern around fossil fuels and climate change and global warming and so on. So, but these are all fair observations. Well, we have a motion on the table. So, unless there's any other questions.
Frank, where was that, the that it can't go below?
Right.
Yeah, page 12. And it's the second paragraph from the bottom.
Page 12.
Yep. Second paragraph from the bottom.
So, if for some reason we didn't use any electricity, then we wouldn't have to pay, well, or we'd get, we wouldn't have to pay more than the credit we'd be getting from. Okay, so in worst-case scenario, are we paying anything?
Yeah, so if we only subject 80% of the bill to this net metering, we're going to be buying electricity from Green Mountain Power, and we would be buying electricity at 13.9 cents a kilowatt hour from Sky Solar. We'll cut a check to them. So, that, under the current scenario, it'd be 20%, of our bill at the prevailing utility rate, which is about 19 cents. And then 80% of our bill would be paid to Sky Solar at this 13.9 cents. So, that's the first sentence. And then the second sentence is, however, no circumstance shall the membership payment exceed. So, membership payment is the payment to Sky Solar. That's the 13.9 times what we signed up for. So, under no circumstance shall that exceed the credit that is provided by the utility, that's Green Mountain Power. So, that says we're never going to pay Sky Solar more than we would have paid Green Mountain Power.
So, that protects us if Green Mountain Power's price goes below 13.
Right now, we buy it for 19 cents. If we could buy electricity for 13.8 cents, then yeah, this would be a losing deal without that.
Right, so then we pay the 13.
Yeah, so then, you know.
So, the only downside risk then is if our actual use dropped below 80% of what we're giving.
Yeah, and then we would have to, we would have to go out and find an off-taker.
Oh, we could resell that, too. That's right, we had those discussions. Yeah, we already approved that in the last one a year ago. Was it, was it 80%?
So, we did the same thing a year ago.
So, that was the same decision, the same risk trade-off that we had. And if they go belly up, just like the one we signed last year, did we lose anything other than your time? Though you learned so much.
We learned a lot, yeah.
But financially, we weren't out. We just had to pay market rates.
That's right. We actually signed, this board approved a very similar arrangement last year, a year ago. But as we went to implement, the vendor wasn't able to perform. And it was just the party, the parties walked away from each other, and there's no consequences other than time.
Sean?
In terms of consumption, I know people who have put up solar arrays and then made them larger, so they actually are producing more power than they need. They've always burned wood for heat, and they go, well, we're getting old. We don't need to burn any wood, so we'll put in a heat pump. So, they've changed their energy use creatively to take advantage of the fact that they were able to do large amount of solar. So, there are many ways. And the use of energy, as long as they're people, is not going to go away, guaranteed.
Yeah, the heat pump technology is becoming far more compatible with the cold New England winter. And, you know, that's what's slowed it for this area. But I guess in the last five years, they've figured out the way to make them function.
And then you have cooling capacity in the summer also, which is a really nice thing. So, I think there, you know, there are creative ways to use electricity if you happen to have more than you need.
All right, anybody else have thoughts, questions, concerns? All right, so, question is to approve doing this, as Sean stated. All those in favor? Opposed or abstentions?
Abstained. Abstained.
Okay. And just for the record, because you just don't feel like you know enough?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, motion passes, 6 to 2. Great, thank you. All right, is there anything else to come before the board tonight? I was getting reputation of having fast meetings, so I think I helped that night out. Anybody, anything else coming before the board tonight?
Here now, I move to your turn.
Is there a second? All right, Laurie, that's second, okay. All in favor? All right, we were joined, everyone have a nice holiday. We'll see you in two weeks.